The regular meeting of Lakeport City Council for Tuesday, May 5th, 2015. English for Cinco de Mayo. And that was horrible. Gives it gets. Gives it gets on a Tuesday. Woo! Madam Clerk, real call please.
Councilmember Turner?
Present.
Councilmember Matina?
Here.
Councilmember Perlett?
Here.
Councilmember Spillman?
Here.
Mayor Sheehan?
Here. Ms. Rosicka, would you please honor us with leading us to the place we'll be at?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jill. And some of you notice a new addition here to our council chambers. Very, very nice. That looks awesome. When did that get put up?
It got put up Tuesday, I believe, Rick Calhoun.
Looks great. Finally, we have something up there in the dense space with that wonderful paneling that the phone company loves so much. Do we have any urgency items for tonight's agenda? All right, we have a posted agenda. We would motion to approve the agenda as posted.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as posted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Well, good evening once again, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you that wish to publicly comment on any of our agenda items this evening, you may do so when council is taking up that item. I will ask for public comment. For those of you that would like to comment on something that is not on the agenda tonight but is under the jurisdiction of the city council, you may do so during open public comment. We do ask that you fill out a comment form that are on the table when you enter chambers and please hand that to the clerk. But please understand that any comments pertaining to any issues not on tonight's agenda, the city council cannot come to a consensus nor take action on. Next is our consent agenda. Tonight, on the agenda, multiple items. We will be leaving reading except by title of any ordinances. Under consideration, we'll be approving the warrants from April 22nd, 2015, approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of April 21st, 2015. There are multiple applications. David, do I need to read through all of those?
No.
Okay. Multiple applications for events within inside city limits, use of public property, and we also have a purchase of an unmarked police vehicle. Is there any one of those items that any council member would like to pull or discuss further beyond the consent agenda? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any of the items A through J on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as posted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything further? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Need public input. All right, Mr. Birch, please. And for those coming up, please state your name for the microphone, and if you would like your name spelled properly in the record, be so kind, you can write it down there on our ledger.
Ronald Birch, Lakeport resident, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I noticed on your last city council meeting, there was a memo prepared by your community development director regarding some of the comments that were made. I would just like to get a copy of that if possible.
Absolutely, yeah, that's part of the public record, so we can definitely make that happen.
Thank you.
Ms. Shaker?
Hello, my name is Margaret Shaker, other than Lakeport. I'd like to comment on a paragraph in the minutes of the Lakeport City Council of April 21st, under the City Council Communications Miscellaneous Reports, paragraph five, which states as follows, quote, "Community Development Director Ingram prepared a memo regarding some of the comments that were made during the vector control hearing at the last meeting. There were some questions regarding notice of a meeting of 2003. Staff found that we met the threshold of noticing by publishing in the newspaper and sending letters out to affected parcels," end quote. My properties are within the affected parcels, and I did not ever receive a notice of this meeting to rezone some of vector controls properties to PCU. Also, Mrs. Birch has done considerable research into the archives of the local newspapers, and nothing can be found of a notice there either. If the staff has found that you met this threshold of notice, I respectfully request actual proof of either notification, a copy of the mail version, and a copy of the newspaper version. I believe I have a right to this information, and I would hope that you could provide it for me." Thank you.
And we will do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lyons. And this one pertains to nonplottable signs in library park. Is that going to fall under our...
Yeah, I...
Is that close enough to our agenda item this evening, or...
Suzanne Lyons. I didn't know, I didn't know, Margaret, if you were going to bring that, bring those up. There was one more, and so I didn't know if I should say it now or wait until you did your thing.
It has to do with the water conservation. You might want to wait till you speak on that item anyway.
Okay, all right, I wasn't sure. But I could add something that's...
Probably. Yeah. Yeah, because it's a pretty broad range.
Okay, all right, fine.
Thanks, Jill. Anyone further on public comment that we have not heard from? All right, if not, we move on to public presentations, and this item will be the Lake County Marketing Program and a presentation. Jill Rosicka, County of Lake. Welcome, Jill.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here.
I want to say that this is, I've been doing this presentation quite a lot, and this is the best setup I ever walked into. I just can't tell you how much I appreciate having the projector and the computer set up, so thank you.
Thank Dan.
Thank you, Dan. I'm Jill Rosicka, I'm the Senior Administrative Analyst of the County of Lake, and I oversee the Lake County Marketing Program, and I'd like to thank you for inviting me to speak tonight, and it's a very appropriate date for you to hear a presentation of marketing. And that is because May 2nd through May 10th, 2015, is National Travel and Tourism Week. It's an annual tradition that was established by a congressional resolution in 1983, and was first celebrated the following year. During these 98 communities and states across America are celebrating the significant contributions that traveling tourism make to their local, state, and national economies. And today, actually, May 5th, you all may think of Cinco de Mayo, which it is, but it's also the official travel and tourism rally day. So, communities and entities across the nation are passing resolutions, and so, anyway, Margaret, this is an awesome date. So, in the last 18 months, we've actually put several marketing initiatives, sort of, we've introduced them, and it's very satisfying to see that they're coming to fruition and to coalescing into a strong foundation. In fact, I initially made this presentation on March 24th to board supervisors, and several things have even changed since then. So those of you who've seen this before will get some new information. I always like to start this presentation with a definition of what the Lake County Marketing Program does, because a lot of people actually don't know how the county marketing fits into things. So, what do we do? The Lake County Marketing Program acts as the destination marketing organization for all of Lake County, and so that means our primary function is to bring people outside of Lake County into Lake County to spend money to improve our local economy. So it's always about bringing outside visitors into Lake County. And when people ask for money or want to do some sort of advertising litmus test, is this going to bring people to Lake County, and how much money are they going to spend? This is maybe a more fun way to look at it, but the Lake County Marketing Program markets the cluster. So if you look at each individual grape, they represent the segments: the wine industry, lodging, restaurants, water sports. We have Mendel Lake S U P here, farm, the farmer's market, stargazing, you know, quilt trail, all different things are the individual grapes. And we don't market those individual things, we market the region. Having said that, we will use individual items to market the region. And I think sometimes that's confusing. A lot of businesses want them to, us to be marketing them, and it's, and that's just, that's not the purpose of the destination marketing organization. So, in order to create a strategic plan, you know, it's my opinion, you always need to have some goals. So the goals I've been working off of for the last 15 months are, the first goal is, we need to make Lake County relevant again as a vacation destination. We fell off the earth a little bit, so now we need to become part of the conversation again. The second goal, which I think is incredibly important, is we need to change our negative talk, not only outside of Lake County but inside of Lake County, into positive talk. And the third goal, which will be a goal all the time, every time, most important goal, is to bring more tourists to Lake County to spend money to improve our local economy. I just want to show you some of the marketing budgets. We, in Lake County, I was very pleased, we have $404,000 to spend, and here are the marketing budgets of our neighboring counties. So you can see that we are significantly lower than all of them. I just see that as we need to be a little bit smarter, a little bit more clever in how we spend our money, and definitely much more innovative. Just a quick breakdown on how that money is spent. Over half of it is spent on advertising and promotions, the contract with the Lake County Chamber, which I'll talk about later, because we actually have a terrific partnership with them. We do offer visitor information services through our libraries, the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program, $25,000 for a redesign on the visitor website, and the $27,000 for the visitor information kiosk. So just so you can see where that $404,000 is going. So, giving you the background now, I'm going to talk the strategy. There've been basically four main strategies that we've been working off for the last 15 to 18 months. So those of you who saw this presentation last year are familiar with creating a bold online presence, providing leadership, and nurturing partnerships, to provide hospitality training, and to start using research and statistics. So let's look at the first item, and just to forewarn you guys, the bold online presence will take the majority of this talk. You've heard me say this so many times, we need a new visitor website. I just looked at a statistic today. On May 5th, 2014, to May 5th, 2015, there has been an 82% increase in how people look at our visitor website on the mobile, in the mobile, 82% increase in people using the mobile phones. So it's incredibly important for us to get this done, and you guys, I'm not just saying it anymore. We've got the wireframes. I know it's not a very exciting slide, but there is the wireframe for our homepage. We are on track. We will have a new visitor information website, world-class, high-impact, middle of June before the, before the July hits. I can't even get to tell you guys how exciting that is. Social media. We have been organizing our content, a lot of it on Facebook and Twitter. We had about 1,600 new likes in the last 12 months, and we're actually, I wish Andrew Britton was here, because I think he does your Facebook page, we've been getting over 100 likes a week. So we're starting to build some critical mass now with our social media. We're going to start doing some more user-generated content, because that's what visitors are looking at right now, and if you haven't, please like, visit Lake County, California social media sites. I want to show you something. This is, I don't know if you guys could see the slide, it's not in your presentation. I did a, I just threw up a post on April 29th about our clean air from the American Love Association, and this is the biggest post we've ever had. If you look at some of those numbers, there are over 62,000 impressions, but what is far more exciting is we had over 5,000 engagements, which is a like, a share, or a comment. It was so exciting, I mean, that's, that's, is that the population of Lakeport or more? You know, talking about being engaged with this post. So for me, I'm really excited about our social media. I love Lakeport's social media, and I think it's a great way to go. Another strategy for bold online presence is to use high-impact visuals. So if you look at these pictures that I'm showing here, one of the things you'll notice is that they're pictures of people enjoying Lake County. We have a terrific photo library of beauty shots with Mount Canuck dying in the lake and our wildlife and everything, but we're trying to shift our branding to showing people enjoying Lake County. And I, I think that that's terrific. Of course, I think it's terrific. Anyway, one of the things I want to do now is I want to show you guys some marketing videos. It's going to take me a second here, and I want to show you three marketing videos, because I want to show you how well they have been received, and, and how many people out in the world are seeing what's going on in Lake County.
Can we turn off the lights? Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Show's up there.
I'm just really amazed, the beauty of Lake County.
Stop.
There's some really good climbing around here, and the climbs are brutally hard, and going downhill is, is the payoff for going uphill. Some people really enjoy that more than the climb, and I guess I'm one of the people that enjoys the climb more than the descent. Because of the lack of traffic and amount of roads and clean air and the great weather, it's probably one of the best places in the state to be a ride.
All right. I apologize for not having the front of that up there. Let's see, this is not my computer. So, let's see, here we go.
Moved up here about a year and a half ago, and man, just been loving this one bit ever since. It has to be the world's, probably the world's best bass fishery. You've got majority big fish in this lake. You can fish for two pounders, you can fish for four pounders, you can fish for eight pounders, and they eat everything, so it's, it's one of the greatest lakes in the world. Come here and you can catch reaction fish here every day. It's not like my old legs, it's, I don't want to fish today. You come here, you know, maybe fish a quarter of our jig, you still laugh. I'm laughing, like you said, when I throw an inch base, I'm going to get fishing in. It's not like this whole pro-life, we weren't going to get them.
My name is Pat Brown, I'm a Lake County sailor. I race a lot of times in San Francisco, where you get ready for a race and everything. You're putting on two layers of Panegonia, you're putting on four layers of foul weather gear, your boots, all your safety equipment, just to go out and go sailing. Up here, you put your basic life check on, and you're going sailing, and you're nice and comfortable and warm. You go on a starting line down San Francisco Bay, you would have 60, 80 boats on the starting line. And here, you know, we're starting with, you know, 10 boats. It's fun, the family gets to come up and sail, my wife sails with me, my son sails with me, so it's kind of neat that you get to come up here and really participate and have a lot of fun.
I specifically showed you those three videos, because I've released them within about the last five or six weeks, and there are just some amazing results. Talking about being more clever and innovative with your money. I did spend $200 each to promote each one of these videos, and it's only been on our Facebook page. But here are some of our results that you can see. 23,000 views, 52,000 impressions for the bass fishing, sailing was just as good, cycling was off the charts. So, these are some pretty good numbers of people who are out there seeing this stuff across social media. Oh, and so, anyway, Janelle knows I like this, this next part. So to me, that was our bold online strategy until October, when I got a call from this content marketing company out of San Francisco. And it was kind of like, all right, what is a content marketing? All right? It's about delivering your content where people want to see that. Well, I didn't really quite know it, so we went on a four-month trial period. This company in San Francisco, for $2,500 a month, this is what we're paying, $2,500 a month, they tell our story. They pick four stories, and they write articles. They do all the research, and they write an article. It's typically about 750 words, blog-length, casual, social media, and it's kind of across, well, it, it comes across as a public relations piece, although it is paid advertising. So they tell our story, they work with us so that we can find the demographic we want that story to hit. Do we want it to hit the 55 and plus on the East Coast, or do we want it to hit the millennials in LA? And then they distribute it, and they distribute this content, and it's all web-based. So, you'll see it coming across your social media feeds, or if you're surfing the net and you read an article down at the bottom, it'll say, "Other articles that you may like." That's where it's showing up. We're guaranteed 8,000 engagements a month for that $2,500, so if the articles are not performing, and we're not getting the engagement, which is a like, share, or a comment, they change things around a little bit, or redirect it. And then, every two weeks, they provide me with a report on how things are doing. I think it's the best $2,500 we've spent, and I think some of you may have come across, our first, very first article we put out was, "Meet the Oldest Lake in North America." I don't know if any of you saw that, but that is an example of what content marketing is. So we now have a contract with them throughout the year, and so we'll be putting out four articles a month promoting Lake County, and I just, the splashing is coming up, and I think what we're going to do is we're going to have a put-out article about how Clearlake was used for seaplanes during World War II. So it's not a press release, it's a really interesting tidbit and content about what's going on in Lake County that makes people want to find out more about it. So this content marketing has been really great. We were the first DMO that they signed on. They're now representing DMOS up and down the state of California, and I actually had to give a reference for the Polynesian Cultural Center, who wanted to know whether they should be using them or not. As far as results go, the purple is the visits to our visitor website after the content marketing campaign was launched, and the blue is the same time last year. So in January, after that campaign was launched, we had 109% increase of visitors to our website. Here's some other stuff. In an 11-week period, we, the content was seen 40 million times with almost 47,000 engagements. So I'm very excited about this. It's not traditional, you're not seeing it, it's not in a magazine or a newspaper, and sometimes you don't even know that this paid advertising is coming across. So that covers bold online presence, and the next thing, the next sort of prong of our strategy is to provide leadership and nurture partnerships. And I think those of you guys who've been working with me for a while know how important partnerships are. Constantly trying to have partnerships. We have a partnership with the City of Lakeport, working with Willeda, City of Clearlake. As I said, Melissa and I have a great relationship. We had a meeting just last week to make sure that we're not duplicating services. We don't have enough money in Lake County for Melissa and I to be doing two different things, having two different organizations that are doing the same thing. So obviously, we need to have those partnerships, because we need to leverage our money. A lot of you will hear me say, we need to speak in a unified voice, so that we can be heard above the chatter, instead of speaking in separate voices to create more chatter. Industry communication, when you have partnerships, is much better, and then you can do cross-promotions and packages. And again, Mendel Lake S U P is a great example of doing that with their Pilates and their paddle, stand-up paddleboards. I'm also a big believer in partnerships, so we have partnerships outside of Lake County. We're with the North Coast Tourism Council, which represents the North Coast. They have a salesperson that goes to international sales events every month. So a couple of, I'm going to say about eight weeks ago, Twin Pine Casino and Fetterman Railroad put together a package of a couple of nights at each place, and some wine tasting. It was a raffle item in Germany. The person who won the raffle item has already booked their stay in Lake County. So in our relationship with North Coast Tourism Council, we're getting more international exposure, working with Visit California, the state tourism, and here are some other things. But it's just so important for us to have those outside relationships. I had a phone call with the same lady at Chamber of Commerce the other day, who told me that they have the exact same problems we do. They have no money, they have bad roads, and they don't, and they have people who don't, you know, want tourism in their town. This is St. Helena. You know, it's beautiful, you would think that they would have everything, and so it was an interesting phone conversation to have with this woman, and we could compare what was going on, and work together, and collaborate to find some solutions. The third part, the third prong of our strategy is hospitality training, and I think many of you are aware that we, the Board of Supervisors, approved in December a contract to implement the Certified Tourism Ambassador Program here in Lake County. You can see our logo there, the California Lake County Tourism Ambassadors. Board of Supervisors also set aside money to put 200 county employees through and 200 private sector employees through. So, that's going to be great for our first year. Right now, we're defining the program. I'm in the middle of editing the pre-read, which is 189 pages document that you get with it. Most of it is about Lake County, I was so excited. The history of Lake County, everything to do in Lake County. It was, it was just a nugget of golden information, wonderful. End of May, there will be a couple of people trained, so that we can do a field test on June 10th, work out the kinks, that the 25 people who go through that field test will be certified tourism ambassadors when they come out. We're going to launch the program on June 29th, and I know, Kenny, it's a bad day. But what we hope to do in our launch, and what we're working really hard for, is we're working to be able to certify 100 CTAs in one day there, so that by the time the 4th of July hits, which is pretty much one of our biggest weekends here, we're going to have over 100 certified tourism ambassadors out there who can know how to tell Lake County's dope story in an honest, transparent, and positive, accurate way. So I'm very excited about hitting that. And then this will just be an ongoing recruitment and courses like that, so I'm very, very excited about that. The final prong of this is, of course, research and statistics, and I just love to tell the story about, you know, you know, my dad walked to school five miles every day in, you know, in the snowstorm, and I can tell you, everybody's coming from Fremont, and they're driving here. Well, these are, I love, I love stories, but you know what, I'm a fact nerd, so we are doing much more factual statistics. It's just wonderful to be working off of that. One of the things that's super exciting about our website is that we're going to have it set up so that they can be kept capturing visitor data on that. So, again, when you have a small budget, you've got to make sure that you're sending your marketing to the right people. And to send it to the right people, you need to know what your statistics are. So what are some of the other things that we're doing here? Of course, we continue to do our ongoing traditional print. There was the San Francisco Chronicle section that we were part of, the tour and tasting. We work with the Chamber on the Destinations, which is the official visitor guide. We're still providing visitor information services through our library. We provide sponsorships and partnerships. We're a very big sponsor with the Canuck Day Challenge. It's a great event for Lake County. And this is very exciting. Starting May 8th, there will be radio ads playing for Lake County in Sacramento and Sonoma County. The first ones will advertise the lake, as well as the wine adventures, and then the ones that will slip in after that will be marketing the fact that we have water in our lake. You know, it's, you laugh. As the Public Information Officer for the county, I'm going to be challenged with, we've got water in our lake, can we use our water, and you citizens, please don't use water and conserve. So, and then the last thing is, we actually hired an independent contractor to help with marketing. So Steve De Nera, who is the former marketing director of Twin Pine, and really amped up their sales there, is on board. He's project managing the website. He'll be working to get the electronic visitor information kiosks out, as well as he's helping with the traditional advertising buys. So he has been a real bonus to the marketing program. So to tie it all together, a destination marketing organization, which is the Lake County Marketing Program, is, our primary function is to attract visitors from outside its region, to come into its region, to enhance the local economy. And that, again, we market the cluster, not the individual grapes. So if there are any questions at this point that I can answer, I'd be happy to. More otherwise, I'm done.
Thanks, Kevin. Evening, Council.
I have one question. When we talked about the budget versus other counties, are, are we, are we really behind, or does that match up with individual county budgets, you know, in other words, percentage-wise?
No, if you were to look at, the last numbers I have is Mendocino County, their, Mendocino County receives $300,000 in TOT from their county. And then the other six and seven hundred thousand is raised from a tourism business improvement district. So that's the closest one that I can talk to off the top of my head. I know that we actually presented this last year, but we're, we actually, when we, we, I think that was the question you were, is that the question you were? So that's an example. So actually, from a county point of view, the TOT dollars that we're giving, we are giving more TOT dollars in general fund dollars to the marketing program than St. Mendocino County is, even though they have a million-dollar budget. They have other ways of raising the funds that just aren't really maybe workable quite yet in Lake County. So, okay?
The only thing I'd like to say is that I'm just really pleased to see that we're doing something that's, you know, proverbial, cliche, out of the box. It's so refreshing to see something different because doing the same old thing for 50 years is just not working. And I think this, you know, administering to the kids with the cell phones and the middle-aged people, and the seniors now with the cell phones, and everybody's looking at that, and they're trying to speed-read all the stuff and get all the information they need. And tapping into this, I think, is a really good way to go rather than, you know, posting flyers and going to the state fair. Not that all those things don't work incrementally, but I think that you can really leverage it with what you're doing here. And I really give you credit for going outside of the typical scenario, doing something new, different, crazy.
Well, thank you, it's also a lot more affordable.
Being stealth is something I'm used to.
I just wanna say it's the most complete plan that I've ever seen here. We're really lucky to have you, and I think it's gonna be exciting to see what happens from there.
I'm just saying, 2015's gonna be good, but 2016 tourism season is gonna be great.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be, thank you.
Just got a question. I love what you're doing, that's great. Are you still doing direct marketing for the money we put into the program? Do the hotels in our, in Lakeport still get direct marketing for that?
One of the things, I actually work quite a lot with Skylark. So I'm working with Skylark, and as far as, that's part of why I was giving the presentation, is your direct marketing comes from the website and those other things, but we're looking more globally, you know, trying to promote things more as a region. And Conacti Challenge is a big Lakeport event. It's great, it's great for the whole county, but we put in a, we put in a significant amount for the Conacti Challenge. I do work with Priya a lot. I'm trying to think, several of our content marketing articles, we're doing one right now in the Mendo Lake SUP. A lot of those things revolve right around Lakeport. But as far as specific businesses, it's just, it's not part of what, we're not doing the specific marketing of the, yeah, it's much more of an overarching, you know, with the resources that we have right now. We're trying to, we're trying to do things that way. I'm saying that won't change, but it's where we are.
Great job, Jill. So far, the data that you're collecting, the thousands of views on our marketing videos, is very affirming of the innovative ways, you know, when you're taking a chance, trying something new, it's really good to see that kind of immediate, significant feedback. Well done.
You know, it'll be interesting, mentioning the water in lakes, which is the giggles, because, you know, like Folsom Lake, will get to a point where they won't allow other than five mile an hour boats and fishing boats on the lake. And I can imagine that late summer, you know, even if we're having some issues with the lake water, but the fact that you can still get out in the middle of the lake and waterski and paddleboard and have water sports, I imagine that a picture of that on social media that goes out to other communities, and we can get the people here. So definitely the program you guys have put in place, you're getting it at the right time. Unfortunately, Mother Nature's hitting us with a drought, but on the marketing side, that may help us out and bring some people that either haven't been here before or bring them back. Because, you know, the radio too, you know, we all remember the Conacti Harbor Resort. I've heard those commercials everywhere in Northern California, like radio stations. So, and, you know, that was for Conacti Harbor, but still, that was a radio presence, and we haven't had that in a long time. So I think that's great. What you guys are doing is great, and we need it big time, and I'd like to know approach.
Thank you, and I hope you all keep your boat watches open this summer, because that's a really important thing, just like you did last year.
And our brand-new docks.
I know, exactly.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, Jill. Anyone from the public have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you very much again, Jill, appreciate that, that was awesome. We'll move on to council business. City manager, and the first item will be the concession agreement for Mendo Lake SUP.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city council is being asked to consider a concession agreement with Mendo Lake SUP for stand-up paddleboard rentals on weekends and holidays throughout the summer of 2015. Our City of Lakeport municipal code prohibits commercial activities in park land areas unless they're approved by the city council. And in city council in 1998 entered into concession agreements with Roy Disney of doing business with Disney Water Sports and Roy Fields on the waterfront for limited rental staging and launching facilities, non-exclusive for their rentals. And both concessions were charging annual fee of $500 to, they started in like spring through, I believe, around October for those concessions. And we believe in the interest of economic development and making more water activities available for local residents and tourists visiting Lakeport. Staff is recommending a concession agreement for Mike and Allison Konzer of doing businesses in Mendo Lake SUP for the weekends and holidays for summer of 2015 for their stand-up paddleboards. This was done during Labor Day weekend last year, and proved to be well-received activity. And staff is suggesting an annual, well, I had put an annual concession fee of $500, but actually, after talking to Mr. Konzer a little bit more, he's actually only gonna be probably using it maybe six, six times throughout the summer. So we felt that the other two concessions were a much longer period of time and on a daily basis, that maybe $200 would be more reasonable for the concessions for council to consider looking at. They would like to see on that for the limited amount of time that they're gonna be using it. So, Mendo Lake is, SUP is proposing to utilize the grass area just north of the Third Street ramp that is adjacent to the existing fencing. So it's out of the way, and the vehicles are out of the way, foot traffic, so there's more space for foot traffic as possible. So I put a description of what it looks like, and I don't, maybe you came out on Labor Day weekend last year and saw how it was set up and assumed it was well-received. I even went out and tried it, it was a lot of fun. So anyway, I'd like to set that for council consideration. Any comments? Mr. Konzer is in the audience, if you have any questions with him?
Anything from council? From either Margaret or from Mike?
Well, the $500, I understand they're out there all the time, but if you could like only open your business and go out only on holidays and weekends, and you don't have the maintenance of having people working every day during the small time, the no time, or the limited time, and then you come out and the big bang on the weekends, I don't know that the $500 is too onerous for a business that can just cherry-pick like all the weekends and holidays. So, I mean, and I think that maybe 200 might be a little bit, but the whole idea is, is I think it's a great thing for the community. So it's kinda like, I'm kinda torn between the fact, I mean, 200 bucks to the city, or 500, one way or the other, it's not a big deal. Maybe 200 bucks is a better deal, but it's just that when you can just pick the weekends and only show up, whereas on the waterfront, they were dragging those things down there day in and day out, and, you know, on the weekends, they probably did the most. If they just chose to be open on the weekends, it would be more cost-effective for them. So, you know, I don't know that 500 is such a big deal, but nevertheless, either way, I think it's a great asset to the community to have somebody go and have a great time, and they go back home wherever they live and say, "I went out and did the stand-up paddleboarding, it's the greatest thing in the lake, and out there looking for shore, looking for Conacti, it's a wonderful thing." So either way, I'm good with it, but I'm not sure that we need to reduce it like 60% when they can, you know, pick only the weekends where it's obviously gonna be more, you know, financially feasible. So I'm kinda torn on that, but that's just my opinion.
I'm not torn on it, I would reduce it, and I'd want them out there again. I thought it was great for everyone, and it doesn't mean it's gonna stay 200 every year. You know, they could change depending on, you know, how it goes. They give them a chance to get it busy and make sure people know it's out there, and people use this business and that he can make about, because it'll be a lot of work, you know, to set up down there each time. I think it's gonna be a great way for people to spend more time.
Yeah, I agree on the reduction too, and, you know, I see the concession fee sometimes is helping offset some impact that the concessionaire has. And, you know, both Mr. Disney and Mr. Fields were using those launch ramps, day in and day out, rolling trailers, in and out, the parking lot and the launch ramp. So, you know, the paddleboard, you know, the launch ramp is gonna be used by feet, so, which, I think the reduction's fine. And, you know, I do agree, you know, Kenny, that he does get the cherry-pick, but, you know, he does have to get the bang for his buck and maximize his equitable dollars, and, you know, if it continues to grow, as I know it will, then, you know, maybe the next couple of years, we'll see him out there every weekend from spring to, you know, to late summer and, you know, plowing. I think that'll be great, so I'm good with the reduction too. And Mike, did you want to come up, do you have any words you wanted to say, or come up if you're gonna see?
You can't mean wrong, I'm just saying that.
I know, well, it makes sense what you're saying, Kenny.
Mike Konzer, Mendo Lake SUP. While I appreciate your position, I thought I might need to make this, address this. I can assure you, it's not cherry-picking by any means. It's, I'm probably doing this job along with my survey business six days a week. You just don't see it, we do paddleboarding, core boarding out at Highland Springs. I spent four and a half hours up there last night, just so that people had some, could experience it for $30. I have every intention of growing this business and doing a long-time attraction for tourism and locals and promo racing and all of that. I just don't see the demand being there every weekend of the summer. If it was, if I did honestly see that, I don't have any problem paying the $500, and I would be there every weekend. But like Stacy said, it is a monumental task to unload 20 paddleboards along with the canopy and the van, and unload it for this weekend, and load it back up, and then go back to Highland Springs, unload it all again. It's more of a logistics issue for me than a financial, trying to make as much money as possible. Because really, that's the last thing on my mind, is making money. I already do fairly well in my survey business, so just trying to create something new for the public.
That probably goes for councilman Parlet, because he owns a grocery store, so. I'm sorry.
While I respect your position, I honestly, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of what I stood, where we stood on this. Sorry, babe.
That's a good catch.
Thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Anyone from the public would like to comment or have a question?
I think it's about time, we have more things to do on the waterfront, that people can do. If you notice, people bring their boats in, they launch their boats, they go out, they do their thing, they get back in their boats, they get back in their cars, and they go. For people to be able to come down to the beach and do something, just be walking by and go, "Hey, I could go out and do this now. I don't have to haul anything, and I don't have to, I pay my money, I do my thing, and then I can still be here in town. I can go out to dinner, I can do all this other stuff, I'm not leaving." So I think that's a really, really good idea. I didn't know if anybody was doing kayaks. I'd like to see some kayaks. I don't know if I can stand up on a board, but I know I can sit down in a kayak if I can get in the water. But the more the merrier out there coming out of Lakeport, I think.
How about some lounge chairs?
Oh, tied to a tube, I'm a man. Put my margarita on there.
Thanks, Suzanne. Yeah, definitely the presence that's there when the ECF tensor up and the boards are on the rack. And that's the nice thing too, because anybody that's just walking by, you can't miss it, and it looks really nice, and it fits in really well. And that helps a lot too, because anybody that's in the park just by accident can step along some. Anyone else from the public? Question or comment? All right, seeing none, we will bring it back to council. I would like to add one final thing too. Mike and Allison, the last four charity events that I've been with, I've either had the pleasure of being the auctioneer at the MC, their rentals have been donated, and they're, it seemed to be the moonlight ones are the most popular, where they're actually guided out onto the lake during a full moon or a good moon to do a paddleboarding experience. So, and those are all local charities, so I definitely want to commend them for offering that up. That's time, that's, I don't know, they have their busy schedule, but put money out of their pocket too, so that they help to raise awareness in other areas, so I appreciate that. If there's something else for council, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the concession agreement and setup as proposed by Mendo Lake SUP through the summer of 2015 with a concession agreement fee of $200.
Sir?
We have a motion to second. Anything further from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Margaret, thank you, Mike, and Allison. Next, also from the city manager, this is the water emergency and state mandatory regulations.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Water Resource Control Board enacted new emergency regulatory measures to respond to the continuing drought crisis in California. And there were three parts of the new regulations. One, which applies to all Californians, and two, which apply to local agencies which supply water to the public. And on January 17th, 2014, Governor Brown declared a drought emergency. And on April 25th, 2014, he issued an executive order directing the State Water Resources Control Board to adopt emergency regulations to ensure that conservation measures are implemented. Then on July 15th, 2014, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted three regulations. One, which affects all water users, and two, which apply to utilities. The Office of Administrative Law approved these regulations on July 28th, 2014, at which point they became effective. They expired on July 25th, oh, excuse me, they expired on April 25th unless the State Water Resource Board acted to extend them. And all three regulations can be found in Title 23, Article 22 of the Code of Regulations. So in Section 864, all water users, it prohibits any person from engaging in four specific activities, which is to, for the outdoor irrigation, which causes runoff onto pavement and non-irrigated land, washing a car with a hose that is not equipped with a shut-off nozzle, any application of potable water to driveways or sidewalks, and use of potable water in decorative fatten which is not recirculating. Any violations of these regulations is an infraction and can be punishable up to $500 a day, and addition to other applicable penalties. And then enforcement by the city is not mandatory, however, and the city may not wish to expend resources to fully implement this regulation to the city. Water suppliers, in Section 865, this regulation has two parts. It applies differently to water suppliers of different sizes, and only the second part applies to the City of Lakeport. Larger water urban suppliers must implement previously adopted water storage plans and begin monitoring and reporting using a monthly basis. Smaller water providers, like City of Lakeport, must implement a simpler conservation plan and need not report to the State Water Resource Control Board. Though there may be some more, we're still waiting for some more regulation that could change at this time, which I think there's supposed to be some new rules sent out here soon. But complying with these regulations, it's not optional, and if the State Water Resource Board finds a supplier is not compliant, they can send a compliance order explaining the actions supplier that must comply. If they don't comply, then it can be up to $10,000 a day, and fines to the supplier, not to the individual user, water users. But smaller suppliers, public water distributors that do not qualify as urban water suppliers, which means we have less than 3,000 connections, which the City of Lakeport does, then they must either mandate Section 864 with items one through four that I mentioned earlier, or two, implement water conservation measures to achieve similar reductions compared to water use in 2013, which is what we've been implementing as of 2013. Similar suppliers need not, need not, smaller suppliers need not report to the State Water Resource Board, and again, that may change. But the water, there is a water task force comprised of city staff, the mayor, and Mr. Rollins, Dennis Rollins. And it will review the ordinance and the mandates, review our Stage 1 mandates for conservation, and look at Stage 2 mandates for conservation. The committee is recommending that we continue with Stage 1 of our, what we're currently doing, and not implement Stage 2. Also, the Parks and Rec Commission has been in discussion about water conservation during their meetings, and they have asked that the city council consider some of their recommendations, which I've attached to the city council report. So if you have any further questions, there's an attachment of the ordinance and the previous resolution that we adopted for the previous mandate that came down.
Thank you, Margaret. Counselor?
If we do not report to the water board, how do we, when are they able to verify our conservation?
They're not, at this point, they're not mandating that report for conservation. We are, we do have reports for our daily, We are, we do have reports from our daily use and how much that's ever requested of us that is available. But at this point, it's not been requested and it didn't account for it.
Well, they, apparently these smaller water suppliers like Lakeport account for about 10% of the water use in the state. So it's low priority for the public water resources to this. They currently, there are draft regulations which may actually be approved today or tomorrow that may require us to do one-time reporting, comparing our usage this summer as to our usage in 2013. The board's still trying to figure this out.
Yeah, there was talk on that too. All the smaller water suppliers all reported. It would overwhelm the Water Resource Board if it was frequent, you know, like they're going to do for the larger suppliers. So I don't think they were necessarily looking out for us on that one, they were looking out for themselves. But still, I think it's like anything else, like the taxes. You send it off, but you better be ready to prove it if they ask for it.
Which we do have over the country. Anything else?
I am kind of curious, but we'll see how it all goes. I'm just kind of wondering if counties will be responsible for reporting their individual additions, you know, if, how that's all going to morph. But I'll just wait.
And that actually, going to that question though, what is it, what is it called that will be created?
The GNSA?
Yeah, GNSA.
Groundwater.
Yeah, that's, that's related, but somewhat separate issue. Because I think the entities that have to report under here are utilities basically.
Right, this is more concerned consumers' use rather than water sourcing or...
Correct.
Correct, okay, great.
Depending on our size and what comes down the line, are, do you foresee that we would have to go to a stage two? I mean, it's pretty dramatic when you look at the list of differences.
Well, right now, and then water, I mean, and Mark can confirm this, but we have, our levels aren't any different in our wells. We turned the surface water treatment plant up at the same time and did last year and we always wait to see, you know, what the water levels on the wells before we, and so that hasn't changed. And the lake's up another two feet this year, so there hasn't been any drastic changes for Lakeport. And Mark, you know, his department, he can confirm that, that that's what we're...
Yeah, two months is a little bit, little bit better than last year.
Yeah.
It's still bad.
And Yobo doesn't get there, Main Alpin, did they miss their, is that correct? Five foot of Zero Ramsey by May 1st?
One of the things I think is always interesting is when people, I mean, if and when we needed to draw down from the lake, it's always been historically, same to me, that we lose, I don't know, maybe 20 or 30 times more water through evaporation than we do through actual, I mean, what we draw down, if we were to go onto the lake and pull that down, the amount of water that we'd use is what, less than a couple inches compared to, you know, the amount of several, over two or three feet from evaporation. So it's like, it's ridiculous that we would even consider a stage two when the amount of water that we lose to the sun is, you know, very significant, yet if we were drawing down, it would be very, very insignificant as far as the lake level.
Yeah, I don't even know if it'd be magical.
Yeah. Because when you see places like Shasta that are down 175 feet, and I think as bad as it was last year, we were at minus two or three, we're down like, you know, five feet below maybe a normal year, and they're down 175 feet, I mean, we shouldn't be thrown into the mix theoretically, but we all have to, I guess, suffer, you know, somewhat equally, even though we really don't have the need. And then when people are like lowering their consumption in certain areas and then because they're not drawing in enough money through the financial department, then they want to penalize them because they're not drawing enough money and so now they want to, you know, that's just absolutely...
Are you looking at Dan?
He's already done the numbers and he already calculated that we would be using less water and we've already calculated that into our enterprise fund. So congratulations on that.
Anything else? No. Okay. Now...
Suzanne?
Yeah, I think we'll go ahead and move on because there are probably some questions erased from the public. So at this time, we'll open up for a public comment.
I wanted to just get up and say this because I know that you and the council have seen the recommendations that the Parks and Rec Commission came up with, but I noticed there are some young people out here who have never lived through what's called gray water, pouring those garbage cans full of water down your toilet because you can't flush it. It's a whole new ballgame. So I want to just go ahead and read the conservation recommendations that we made, just so people who don't have a copy of the packet can see it. One of them was to use drought resistant plants to replace plants that die in the parks, to expand the areas under the trees, because you don't have to have your grass growing right up to underneath your, underneath your trees, you can have some mulch there. Replace plantings with rocks. So the few plantings that drop, die out, and we have this, they have to be Godzilla rocks, big rocks that people can't pick up and throw. But you can do nice plantings that don't have quite as many plants and not such water users. Use crushed granite, and we had said, I think, other, because there's a problem with crushed granite, there's some issues there. But some sort of permeable pathways and make the pathways a little wider maybe and the grass areas a little, a little less large. We talked about the flower baskets and I know that that's a Main Street, a Main Street, what are they called? Thank you. Issue, but to use more drought resistant plants there. I know it's an issue because the flowers are really, really pretty, but if we have a drought again next year, we might really be interested in looking at something that is not as, something like succulents that don't use as much water. Bringing the Westside Park water, non-potable water there, bringing water from the lake or someplace and getting other ways of watering that lawn out there. And recharging the groundwater, maybe using water off of roofs, waters off of parking lots, that would be something that might be looked into for Westside Park, to be able to have another, a different kind of water source than potable water. One of the things that did not get on there, so I'm just going to add it, we talked about it, but it didn't get on the list, was it might be a really good idea to have a couple of small signs down in Library Park that they can make a mint house that say, this is non-potable water that we're using, this is water out of the lake, just because there's a perception. And you have people who are being told that they can't water their lawns and they can't water their vegetable gardens. It would be really nice for them to, when they walk on a lawn, to go, oh, guess what? This is not potable water, it's not, it's coming from the lake. So those are just some other recommendations.
Suzanne, can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
Did you ever hear anything, I know I sent over some stuff, some connectors that could go onto the plants for Main Street? Did they...
I didn't hear anything about it, but I don't know. Suzanne Russell. There's likely a Suzanne Russell...
They were just meant to keep the runoff, you know, against the netting of the base so that it wouldn't...
So that they wouldn't be dripping on the street?
Plus it would have flowed back.
Go back up again. And I do know that, you know, I think that they're changing the amount of water that goes on those plants.
Yeah, I think twice a week or something.
Yeah, and actually, they were getting watered too much last year. And I don't know that the city, I don't know that the city, does the city do that? Or is that...
They set the timers.
Setting the timers? I thought somebody else was setting the timers. They weren't working right last year, there were some problems with them. But yeah, definitely they were getting more water than they needed. But I do know that when people see that water on the street, it's like when they walk by and they see you watering your lawn and the water's running down the street, people get really annoyed, you know, and especially when they're trying to be good and they're not washing their cars and they're, you know, let's hope we're not doing the gray water thing, but we really need to get prepared.
I had a poor lady apologize the other day when we were out walking on Sunday, she goes, I have a well. She's walking, your yardage is even well.
Yeah, I apologize to do it, yes. Right, yeah. Oh, yeah, you know, I can hear that.
Thanks, Suzanne. Anyone else from the public? Like to kind of ask a question or have a comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for...
Just want to make sure council understands gardens are not part of the community today. It's only ornamental.
You have to get a point back. You can still water your grass and you can still water your vegetables, right?
Well, your grass, it's just your lawn, it's supposed to be two days a week. Your vegetables does not have a mandate on the...
You can water your vegetables.
It had, it's ornamental, which lawns, front yard lawns, now lawns that are part of soccer fields and recreation is not considered ornamental, grass or ornamental landscape.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, you know, one, we do have a large park out there with green grass and there probably are some perception issues that maybe we can look into dealing with, but, you know, definitely when the water comes from the lake, it makes a difference. But, you know, that park is, is the lifeblood of over 90% of the events that we do inside the City of Lakeport. So, you know, unfortunately, we have to weigh, you know, the visitors coming into Lakeport and everything for our residents here. And so it's a tough one, but, you know, maybe there is a perception issue, maybe we can look at that. But I think that we definitely need to be proactive within the community and, you know, it's recreational, but, you know, we, I guess I heard a statement that, that kind of set me off a little bit. And it was, it was said that, well, if the city can have a recreational park, then maybe you just set up your own lawn as a recreational entity and then you don't have to follow the mandates. And I just think that's inappropriate, it's not being very proactive. I think that we as a community need to be proactive. And, you know, basically, my take on this with the stage one is education, we need to get it out to the public. And we all have to do our part because if you don't want us to do it for you, then we all need to come together and do it ourselves. Because hopefully we'll never get to a stage two, but stage two is brutal.
It is, yeah.
It is brutal.
Huge difference.
And Mr. Mayor, one of the other proactive things that has been done is the staff did write a grant last year, finally got the funding and finally got the contract from the CDP and through HCD for our housing related grant. Because of our affordable housing, the senior project that was done, which they're in the audience today, we received $80,000, which part of it will go to engineering and part of it towards the project. And that's getting ready for an RFP right now to go out for that. So that will bring lake water out to Westside Park instead of any other water. So that is in the process, right?
And that's going to be great.
Huge.
Yeah. And these are all good recommendations too from the Parks and Rec. I mean, and this, I mean, we should all be looking, you know, for our businesses and our residences too, to follow these. And I, you know, I think those should be included in any informational package that we send out to help people, because sometimes people just don't understand, you know, what it takes to conserve water. And if we can do it ourselves and not have the state do it for us, especially, that would be, that would be great. Anything else from council? All right, seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to continue current restrictions under Resolution Number 2512, 2014, and direct city, or direct staff to do community outreach to educate residents and business owners of state mandates and current city stage one requirements.
Second. Motion and a second. Anything further? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Margaret. Okay, next, also from our city manager, this is regarding the docks ribbon cutting ceremony.
This is a fun item. One of the city council's top writers for the fiscal year of the 2014, 15 priorities was to install new docks at Library Park. This has been successfully completed. Rotary generously provided a donation of $10,000 towards a dock project and some of which was used to add lighting to the docks. So it's really cool out there at night now, there's solar lights on the docks. And the docks are now being used and enjoyed by the public, are in, they're completely installed. There's going to be some more lights installed, but the full docks are already installed there now. In celebration of this successful project, the city will host a ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday, May 21st, 2015, at 5:30 PM. We've actually moved that back to five because it's conflicting with the Rotary's Top 40 Awards for Students. And we have council members and staff that have, that have their, their children that are receiving awards that night. So we moved it back a half an hour to five o'clock and then at 5:30 to have the ribbon cutting, so they, members can also be with their children. So the Lake County Chamber of Commerce and the Lakeport Main Street Association have also expressed willingness to assist with the ceremony. We've already had one meeting with the group. And the committee will be meeting and working on plans for this event. One of the things that have been, has been discussed is whether or not to have Lakeport Main Street Association sell beer and wine during the event and, which would require city council approval and then the Main Street Association would also have to be required to get an ABC permit. So the city council will be appraised as, you know, a detail if we have more information by our next meeting, we'll hopefully have...
Talk about the music.
Oh, yes. And Elsie Diamond's will be playing that night, so we're going to have music in the park for a couple hours and after the ribbon cutting at 5:30. So, and we're looking for some refreshments, possibly some hot dogs for the first 2300 people that come, working up, we're still working out those plans, how that's going to go. But anyway, if you have any questions.
Maybe the Rotary should have their top 40 down in Library Park. Enjoy the music.
At least I would be there at that point.
Why can't we, Kenny, you're probably doing that barbecue.
I am.
What if that happened?
What do you feel to be for the ribbon cutting? I'm not sure.
Why don't, why don't you move the Rotary barbecue down there?
Because we're only supposed to serve 140 people, about 600 or 800.
We can't rope it off to the kids?
It's just more food.
Make them work.
Counselor would probably be more specific. I'm only supposed to be serving 140.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
It's not a problem, but they'll also need to get a Lakeport place permit prior to the U.S.C. application. And we don't have an issue with it, just want to make sure that's on the record.
There was some debate back and forth whether it should just be, you know, no alcohol or we, the city of course has, can have anything to do with the alcohol for Main Street, would be a fundraiser for them and do the beer and wine.
Can't have a party without beer.
I'm fine with it.
Anyone from the public? Like to comment or have a question? Good evening, Melissa Fulton.
Thank you, Melissa Fulton, Lake County Chamber of Commerce, but I'm speaking as a Rotarian right now. Kenny, I think it's a good idea if we could move that down there and we could certainly rope off the area. No, I think it's a fabulous idea and you can have a roped dock area. Yes, you can, Kenny.
No, I'm saying, hey, I'm all for it.
You were shaking, no, you have to go like this. This means yes.
I'll go wherever they send me now. I'm just an employee.
You're the cook. No, I think it would be a fabulous idea. It would make it a lot easier on parents, all of the parents, and it just adds to the celebration of this great addition to Library Park and Lakeport. So are you going to be at Rotary tomorrow?
I wasn't planning.
Okay, well, I'll stick up for you.
Not because of that, but because it is the first of the month and...
Oh, well.
Melissa will take care of it for you.
But you know, I would have absolutely no problem, it's just...
Okay, I'll bring it up at the meeting tomorrow.
We need to talk to Lance.
I will. I will.
But I'll go wherever you send me now.
I'll call Lance tonight and I get finished with the meeting.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else from the public?
And I can switch to hot dogs after we do the ribbon cutting.
That's all right.
I just want to comment, I had so many voters, just great compliments, they love those docks, they do it out there, so.
They're so pretty at night.
Had Bob Bredeau's super yacht, 60 footer out there.
Yeah, that's a good yacht.
We could have high impact photos.
Exactly. High impact photos. You'll have to be there for some high impact photos.
Yeah, you gotta get a picture.
Yep, we'll make sure they're there. I mean, is it okay for us at least to come to consensus on adult beverage?
Yeah, it's only agenda.
So I mean, are we all okay with that?
Yeah, I think it's part of the two different suggested motions.
Well, then, Margaret, I guess you guys can proceed with that avenue, if the committee sets reasons, so.
Well, we have a motion. Is there any other?
It's part of the proposed motion, whether it includes alcohol beverages.
Anything else from council? All right, we'll entertain...
I'll make a motion to approve the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new docks on May 21st, 2015, and approve the sale of alcohol by the Lakeport Main Street Association at the event. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anything further from council?
Yes, it's also my son's birthday. Can I put up a banner? Okay, okay, I'll stop.
For a fee.
Do we have to add 1000 to this?
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Margaret. Okay, moving on to community development director, this is the general plan amendment and zone change to facilitate the relocation of our police department operation. and zone change to facilitate the relocation of our police department operations.
Good evening, Arnold Merrick, fellow council members. The project before you consists of three parts, a general plan amendment, a zone change, and then also the approval of an environmental review prepared for this project. Um, in this case, it's presented in the form of a negative declaration. I believe there's a mistake in the agenda that inadvertently makes reference to the project as being a mitigated negative declaration, but it is indeed a negative declaration as the project will not result in any impacts with the potential to degrade the quality of the environment either directly or indirectly. The primary purpose of this meeting tonight is to introduce the ordinance for the zone changes, it requires two readings. Staff has recommended to the council introduce the ordinance and schedule the entire project, um, general plan amendment, zone change, and environmental review for a public hearing on June second. Legal notice we prepared, um, and noticed local papers and provided to property owners residing within three hundred feet of the subject property. And then the council is, um, being asked to take action on this project, um, on June second, not tonight. Just a quick project overview, as the council is well aware, the existing police station at the corner of North Forbes and Ninth Street is unlimited in its ability to serve the long-term needs of the Lakeport Police Department and the community. The building is limited specifically in regards to size, to the current and future staffing needs, but most notably is unable to provide adequate security to staff or meet the technological needs of the modern police, of the modern police force. These issues came to a serious head this past year as, uh, Lakeport PD staff has experienced several incidences where violent suicidal persons, in some cases, have come onto the facility grounds and made real threats to staff, um, and, who are limited in their ability to, to see those assailants, given the configuration of the current, um, facility. Given that information, your council directed staff to look at what was necessary to improve the existing facility, and when it was found that the improvements to the site would not be feasible, directed staff to look at possible alternative locations. The project site before you tonight, located at two zero two five South Main Street, which is located within the existing Kmart shopping center, was identified as the best plausible alternative. The site consists of a four thousand four hundred and sixty square foot building and site improvements which were constructed in two thousand and two and utilized for several years by the Social Security Administration as the service of Lake County residents. Social Security having outgrown the site and moved a couple of years ago to the existing, to their existing facility in Parallel Drive, leaving this building vacant. The site, the site is ideal for the relocation of city's police services due to its previous use by a federal governmental agency. It provides good design and separate access for police department staff and general public, which is not plausible at the current site. Another desirable feature is the lack of upgrades that would be required to make the existing building usable to the police force. These include some minor remodel of interior space, additional security cameras and lighting, and then some fencing of the rear parking area for the police vehicles and equipment. The current site has a general plan, um, land use designation of major retail, which also corresponds to this current zoning district. Proposed relocation of this police department to this site requires approval of general plan amendment and zone change to public and civic uses. Staff has received some inquiries at the planning commission stage and also a prior when we were doing our environmental review, um, asking why it wasn't already currently zoned, public and civic uses, given its use as a social security building. And the simplest explanation is that it was previously, um, not owned by the Social Security Administration, it was part of a lease, a short-term lease with the building owner, and, uh, general plan amendment to, uh, public and civic uses would limit its, limit its ability at that time to be utilized by non-governmental services. So it was compatible at that time with, um, the zoning of major retailers, it was still sort of a professional office use. And so that kind of leads us to question, well, why do we need to do this general plan amendment now? And, uh, staff kind of felt that, given the fact that it is now city-owned and, um, and it's our intent to use this building for twenty or thirty years or beyond as the police department, it seems best to, um, make it more compatible with the zoning and general plan with a public and civic uses district. So, the PC, the Planning Commission reviewed this project at its April eighth meeting, and after some general discussion regarding some nuisance activities occurring in relation to the bus stop that's at the site, um, and also looking, taking a look at some of the existing landscaping, they made a recommendation to your council that you approve this general plan amendment and zoning clearance, or zoning change, and adopt a negative declaration for this project. Additionally, the Planning Commission also reported that the project was, um, subject to the approval of this general plan amendment and zone change is consistent with the general plan as is required for, uh, section seventeen point one six oh four zero, the zoning ordinance. The draft ordinance, together with the draft resolution and the Planning Commission staff report, were also provided in your package for additional information. Any questions?
Thanks, gentlemen. Council? Well, this whole project, I thought, was just a perfect example of, I don't know, is it serendipity where we were looking at something and this just came around, I don't know if Stacy had a hand in it or however it came about, I just think it's, it's an incredible coup for the city to get this, and move forward, and it's wonderful. I'm sure the chief and all the officers are gonna be a big plus trying for recruitment and, you know, keeping people on, so, so, I love it.
Yes, very, very positive impact on, um, working condition.
Safety.
Safety, yeah.
I'd agree with the, uh, bus stop. I, I go by there on a daily basis, and it'd be amazing, the difference, a, maybe a little concrete bump out into the planter area would make a large bench and maybe a garbage can. Um, it seems to be kind of a congregation spot there for garbage and, and people having to scent the shade, you know, back about three feet, uh, and stuff, so I, I see it almost on a daily basis.
And the Lake Transit Authority and the area planning council are where, you know, both council member, uh, Tina and myself sit on that. And it's something that, moving forward, so they're trying to find some funding and what's available.
We brought it up to them. So, they're gonna work on it.
I mean, it's progress isn't worth...
Yeah.
It will be easier to sell it to the ABC and the Transit Authority as that becomes our police station, you know, because then obviously it takes a little bit of pressure off, off them.
We did, uh, we did hire People Services to, uh, they go take care of all the grounds and things last week, they were out there, uh, planning, uh, giving agreement to move forward the seven, that's me again.
Perfect.
To further those comments with, um, LTA, Lake Transit Authority, I also have a call with Mark Wall, that was one of the items that came up by the Planning Commission to kind of inquire into what would be involved in came to bench, so I, I hope to have that out, update for you guys on June second as well.
Well, that'd be good, that's multiple contacts, and Mark's pretty good about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
He thinks a little word, so, that's my return.
My ride along, I went toward the inside of the building, and it's really exciting to see all the takedown and officers over, I was saying, okay, this is when we're gonna have this room change, you know, locker room. And he was, he was really excited, this is a good thing. We need to protect our, our team.
Okay.
Second.
For me, the designation change, I think, as Kevin mentioned, you know, looking to the future, we're gonna be there twenty to thirty years, there is a vacant lot that's still next to it, and, you know, there's vacant property across the street, so I think it's appropriate to have the designation changed, and it lets anybody that's coming into our city, you know, understand what's there, what's available, and what they, you know, what our intentions are for their future expansion or development. Anyone from the public? Anything, questions or comments coming up, please?
Rick Hamilton, and I think, uh, Mayor Shield and pro term, Tina, know that I attend a few Lake Transit Board meetings here and there, on contract by the Transit Management Advertisers. I think Mark Wall will work very good well with you, because I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the problem, the problem in the past with a bus, a bus bench there was Social Security didn't want to work with them on it. So that was the problem.
And currently, it was, before we purchased it, private property, so that ran into the issue as well.
Right, so now the city of Lakeport has, I'm sure, even possibly a shelter, but for sure a bench.
Yeah, I mean, that was kind of my inquiry, and I know that there was some funds that were available with the previous grant, and kind of keeping our fingers crossed if those are still monies that are left.
Mark's really good at finding funds.
I have bank.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else like to come up for a question? All right, see nothing, I'll bring back to council, anything further from council? We have a suggested motion, and in that motion, my understanding is, Kevin, we need to add a date for the public hearing.
Yeah, well, it should have a, it has a date in it right now, I believe, June second.
Do we need to take out the mitigated?
Is it same, yes, and you would need to change it to a negative declaration, my apologies.
All right, I will end the motion.
I'd like to make a motion to introduce the proposed ordinance and schedule a public hearing for a second reading of the ordinance for zone change CC fifteen dash zero one, consideration of the proposed resolution for general plan amendment GPA fifteen dash zero one, and adoption of a negative declaration based on the environmental review, initial study ER fifteen dash zero two.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Anything further from council? See nothing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. And it looks like you have the second item as well, the expedited project review for Pacific West, a proposal for thirty-two unit senior housing, architectural and design review.
You still stuck listening to these things, though. I'm, I'm excited to bring this one before you guys.
We're excited for you to bring it.
Staff has been working closely with, uh, Pacific Homes, Pacific West Homes, I'm sorry. Uh, this is the same development group who constructed the Bella Vista Affordable Senior Housing Project at the southeast corner of Martin and Bevins Streets, and identifying a project site for additional affordable senior housing, kind of a base to of their previous project. On March twenty-third of this year, um, they formally submitted an application for an architectural and design review for a thirty-two unit development, um, similar to the previous project, is slightly smaller, um, at twelve fifty-five Martin Street, which is directly across the street from the Lake County Sheriff's Office. At issue is the fact that the developer is under some special time constraints in which they must obtain necessary land use entitlements for this project in order to file necessary applications with the state to finance the project, most specifically the home grant application, which is likely to happen beginning of July. In order to meet this deadline for the financing of the project, community development staff needs to embark upon sort of an expedited, uh, project review. Your recently adopted housing element to the general plan includes some specific language of supporting expedited review and other development incentives for projects designated to serve recognized specialty needs housing, which includes affordable senior housing, program three point three of the housing element specifically called up the need to provide expedited review for qualified projects. The purpose of staff bringing this to, to this evening is to seek your concurrence that this is a qualified project and ask for your direction for staff and ultimately the Planning Commission to engage in an expedited review of this project to try and meet that early July home grant deadline. It's important to note that the expedited review is likely to involve the imposition of conditions requiring engineering and other, um, additional project details that otherwise, under a normal project review, but would be required to be shown on plans or introduced prior to actually going before the Planning Commission for, um, for consideration. These conditions must be carefully crafted and presented in a fashion that provides not only for the expedited review, but ultimately for still, you know, still we can't expedite in, in, in not complying with CECL or the zoning guidelines. It's not gonna be an easy feat as the submitted project application is not entirely complete. For instance, we're missing some key components like, um, architectural renderings and some detail on location of proposed utilities. The applicant is working very, um, very fast to get that information to us prior to a Planning Commission, but it's gonna be difficult to do a complete review. So nonetheless, staff believe this project does qualify for an expedited review as it's consistent with surrounding land uses. The zoning of the site is already R-three, which is multifamily residential, and it's also consistent not only with the, the general plan policy that I put here today, also our density bonus ordinances and many other general plan policies as well. As shown in the attached timeline to your staff report, um, community development staff has already taken steps to, towards expediting this review process. Uh, we've got the request for review out, we had a great project meeting this afternoon with the applicants who are here, also with, um, some key stakeholder groups and identifying. I think we've went a long way today in identifying some of the remaining hurdles and finding solutions towards, towards getting those taken care of prior to, um, the Planning Commission meeting. One of the other elements of this is that it may likely require a special meeting of the Planning Commission, as we won't have enough time to complete the required environmental review, um, advertising period prior to the regularly scheduled June meeting, and may have to ask the Planning Commission to meet on June twenty-fourth. Given that, um, hopefully the applicant did provide us with some information, the, the NOFA for the actual funding did come out, and it looks like there is a little couple extra weeks that we may have available, so if there's a little bit of room there, if something does go aside, that we can quickly get back on to it, it may still be able to get on a regular July meeting, but in the meantime, we want to still kind of hold that late June meeting, just in case things, um, develop differently. As I stated, the applicant and the project engineer or, and other representatives are also here this evening to answer any questions that you may have regarding the financing of the project. But I also wanted, my closing note, and I'm, I'm sure David will, um, agree with me stating this, that what you guys are being asked to do tonight is not make an intended decision on the project or prejudgment to the project, simply to kind of make a finding that this project does qualify for expedited review, directly staff to engage in that expedited review, and then the Planning Commission will then weigh, you know, what's compliant for CECL and, and standard funders.
Thanks, Kevin. Questions from council?
Actually, just one, the existing project over there is, is wonderful. The only concern I have about that whole area over there is with the number of senior projects that are already there, which is, I have no issue with that, it's a great area, and it, and it actually probably is nice having a, uh, further cluster of senior housing. I'd love to find some way, and it shouldn't be completely on the developer, it shouldn't be completely on the city, but it might be nice to find some way to get sidewalk to connect up on Bevins. There are seniors that don't have transportation, they walk, um, it's, there's no way you can do anything on the east side of Bevins with that cluster hill, um, of depth that's there, and the owner, I don't think wants to develop that, but on the west side, I mean, there definitely could be some connection of sidewalk from that corner up to the existing, and at least you'd have access all the way over the hill. That is probably my only major concern, and it really, with the number of senior housing there, somehow, some way that needs to happen. It's just dangerous.
And that, that topic certainly did come up in our project meeting today, and there, there are certainly some topographical challenges to the site, but the applicants seem very committed to taking a look at, um, options for, for creating better pedestrian access there. They recognize that it's...
It's a tough spot.
And the current, and the current site, I think, too, shows sidewalks, at least for the property portion of it.
Yeah.
And there are some challenges there going up the hill, for sure, not only with the steepness, but...
You may have the best stuff, you know, too.
Yeah.
And the applicant is in the audience, if you have any questions.
Well, I just, I just think that, um, in the past, we may not have always had the always, the, the best, um, perception of working with, um, developers and people like that. I think that we need to continue to send a message that the new regime is open for business and willing to work with people, not to do automatically or approve the project, but we definitely want to do everything we can to expedite it and help them get to a point where we can approve it, and those other things, I'm sure, will be taken care of. We need to send a new message that Kevin and the rest of us are open for business, and we'll do everything we can to facilitate new businesses and developments, so I'm all for it.
Hopefully, we can get home, home grant folks to play along with that game.
That's my turn.
I just wanted staff to clarify about how the public review period wouldn't be abbreviated, that, that we'd still, that anyone interested would still have plenty of time to review it and comment.
One of the things we originally looked at in the first analysis was, um, it seemed affordable housing projects sometimes do qualify for categorical exemptions for infill development. Given some of the environmental constraints of the site, topographies, certain two soils, there's some wetlands and other things, it's, it's not appropriate to do a categorical exemption, so we are still needing to do a mitigated negative declaration, or, likely. And in order to keep that twenty-day review period, um, that's the reason for the need for a special, um, Planning Commission meeting, which would normally be earlier in June. If we bump it back to later in June, we can still have that twenty-day review period and still meet the, uh, early July deadline. So we would not be, we would not be shortening, shortening the mandated twenty-day. The, the schedule would be pushed back to accommodate that twenty-day.
Thank you.
Actually, we'd be lengthening it, not the official portion of it, but there would be more time in between.
Yeah, and, and we need all that time.
Anything else? For council?
No, I'm just wondering if they want to come up and say something. No, I'm just wondering if they want to come up and say something.
Yeah, you know, definitely invite.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Johnson, I'm with AMG Associates. Just a little background on our company, we're a affordable housing developer. We built about 5,000 units throughout California, and we recently completed the Bella Vista Senior Apartments here in Lakeport about two years ago. Part of the reason we're back here today is not only because of the significant demand that we encountered with the first project, that right now we have about a one-year waitlist on that project, and we turn away people every day that don't even get on the waitlist because they just don't want to wait that long. But also because we had a very positive working relationship experience with the city of Lakeport, with face one. So, you know, to your point earlier, they were very supportive when I came and talked with Margaret about this second project. She's been very helpful, along with Kevin, in expediting this, and it's been a really great experience so far. The site that we've identified, it's a challenging site. It's got, as Kevin mentioned, extensive offsite improvements, topographic issues, wetlands, the pedestrian access is a major concern of ours and something we are looking into. But we believe with working with our team of engineers, architects, with the city, that we can, you know, we can deal with all those issues and put together a project the city can be proud of. We know we can fill it up. Like I said, there's about 53 people on our waiting list right now in phase one. And we have a financing strategy that we think we can execute, but it will take a lot of work, you know, with the city and with Margaret, utilizing the home program, CPBG, tax credits, bond financing. It could take some time, but yeah, we're very excited to be here. We really would like to, you know, deliver another project similar to Bella Vista, and you know, I'm here to answer any questions you guys have about the process or any concerns.
Any questions for Cameron?
We're building 32 units, you have 53 people, are you looking into another site?
No, actually, you know, you know, we actually, it was really difficult to sell my parkers on moving forward in this project because it was only 32 units, and it's a 10-acre site, and we're looking at major, major offsite improvements. But we actually, I walked us up there with my engineer, and we believe we can build a third phase on the excess land. We'll have seven acres, so assuming this one goes well, we'll come back to the drawing board in a couple of years and work on a site land to maybe do another 40, 50, 60 units potentially. So we, you know, that whole area there could, you know, pretty much alleviate the needs of the seniors in the city of Lakeport. So, you know, we're excited about that. But right now, our focus is just getting this first 32 units off the ground.
Anything else for Cameron?
It's great, it was a pleasure to watch your first complex go up.
Yeah, we're really happy the way it turned out.
Yeah, it was great. So we're.
Good, good to hear.
Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you very much.
Have any questions of staff or Mr. Johnson? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. For me, I mean, I know we're a long ways away from the yay, let's do this, and, but just in the initial phase, while I'm confident, our planning commission is very thorough and very efficient, so I know that their portion, including the public review, will bring in account all, you know, opinions, and so I'm confident with what we're at, being asked to do tonight, that, you know, we're moving in a positive direction. And I look forward to the development. Bella Vista is definitely an icon of responsible development and hitting all of our targets with the site and city, so I would definitely look forward to exploring this project with the same company. We've already been through the rodeo one time, so they have a working relationship, and, you know, I flogged the previous council. You know, they got thrown a major, major curveball with redevelopment going away, and they stepped up to the plate and really helped out to make the project work, so we should continue that legacy. That's my two cents. If there's nothing else from council or staff, want to adjourn the motion?
No.
Yeah. Kevin provided a very, very short, verbose.
All right, I got it. Oh, my God. Make a motion that the city council, based on the findings presented by staff, support the expeditions processing of the city land use entitlement applications for the proposed 32-unit senior affordable housing project located at 1255 Martin Street, and further move that the community development department staff and planning commission engage in appropriate and legally defensible entitlement application processing activities in compliance with California law in order to bring the project in front of the planning commission prior to the state's home grant application deadline. I think that's a run-on, but.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
It's got to run on, except.
Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Cameron Johnson, for bringing that.
All right.
Counsel, is this, we're moving on to city council communications. Councilmember Prolet?
I'm cool. I'm good.
It's probably the first time I've ever heard you say that.
So cool.
Ms. Stilley? I'm more cool, I'm good.
Wow. Counselmember.
I have the honor of speaking at the Democratic Club meeting, just Tuesday, the 12th, so I get to tell them all about my plans for while I'm in office.
That would never happen to me.
That's it, thanks.
Pro Tim?
Nothing tonight.
For myself, just meeting with Mike Thompson on Thursday, and.
Well, I'm doing that, too, but I wasn't going to give my whole calendar.
I'm not either. Have you seen next week? Middletown. And that's it for myself. Anything further, Kevin?
Just a couple of quick things. I had a wonderful opportunity to speak in front of the Rotary last week, and then also Margaret and I are speaking in front of Quonos tomorrow morning, just kind of promoting some of the things that we're trying to do in community development and citywide, so that was really fun. And also, on that same note, I'm sure Margaret may add to it, I got to participate in our first sort of annual, or not my first opportunity to do some business walks. Brad and I actually went to tour down the Gateway Plaza and talked to a lot of business owners there, and I think that's a really positive one. Got a lot of areas that we can build upon, you know, and report on those, so that's all I have.
Thank you for doing that.
It was fun, it was fun.
Chief?
Just to add to that comment, I did have a good time working with Kevin on that, but I wanted to highlight, I mean, we had positive feedback everywhere we went, but one thing I wanted to highlight, which I was happy to be the one that went into this business, it's a new business in town, and one of the things that they, they really were happy about and couldn't believe is that when they moved in, they mentioned at Big Ben seeing a police car drive by every day, and they first thought maybe we were trying to investigate him or something. But they then determined that we were just out of control, and then they also showed up one morning and got one of our security check cards, and that made them feel very good that they were being looked at during the nighttime, so I thought it was a very positive experience.
Mr. Buffalo?
I just wanted to remind, councilors Prolet and Stolz that we'll have a fire extinguisher Monday, and I just have a reminder about that, we'll continue to explore our options with dealing with our pension applications long-term, so that's Monday at 10 a.m., and before I see you.
Ms. Brandy?
Just note that we're going to be paving tomorrow on Miller, so there'll be a lot of distraction activities there, so if you take that route, just be patient, but it will be nice at the end of the day.
Excellent. Look forward to it.
Lead of California City's City Attorney's Conference this week, I'll be attending.
God, that sounds like fun.
Yeah, that build on, no, 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 conference.
It is in Monterey, so that one.
I was going to talk about the business visits, too. This is our first, this season to go out, and we're continuing, we've been hitting, I don't even say, I can't remember how many hundred, 200 businesses maybe last year, and we did probably like 30, at least 30 on Friday, and it's hard for us to finally get a date we can get out, and once we get out, staff loves it, because the community's so excited that we're out there. We have such good opportunity to speak to the businesses, they're excited that we're there, and I love hearing about things that I wouldn't have known if I had been out there, and things that maybe we can address or connect them with opportunities, with other resources that are out there. So it's been a great opportunity, and we'll be going out again. We did have one of our lead act members go out with us, Tyrus St. John went out, and I think there's a couple other lead act members that want to go out next time that we do this. And we break up into pairs, and all the department heads go out, and it's a win-win for the businesses and the staff, so they all seemed to have a really good time to get out there, so it's good.
You know?
I have nothing.
Two reports. All right, well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out tonight, and of course participating in our community government. We greatly appreciate when you still show up. Everybody have a safe evening, and we'll see you at next meeting. This meeting ends adjourned.